Ms. Dorr, Ms. White, Ms. Gibson.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Present.
Ms. Rizzi.
Here.
Dr. Harris Mohammed, Ms. Burke, Ms. Page.
Present.
Ms. Jones.
Yeah.
We have a call.
Thank you. Next, we'll have our translation services announcement.
Good evening, everyone. If you need interpretation from English to Spanish, please come see me. I will be at the table in the back with the interpreters. We have interpretation headsets for everyone that needs one. Interpretation in Spanish is also available for those watching this meeting through Zoom. I will now make the same announcement in Spanish. Buenas noches a todos y bienvenidos. Si usted necesita interpretación del inglés al español, por favor diríjase a la mesa de atrás donde estaré yo y los interpretes. Yo les daré audífonos para que puedan escuchar la reunión en español. También se les proporcionará interpretación para los que están viendo la reunión a través de Zoom. Remindé everyone to please speak at a normal pace and keep their face no more than a couple of inches from the microphone so that the interpreters can hear everyone clearly. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now have the pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
The United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, we'll have adoption of the agenda.
Can the record please reflect that Ms. Burke has arrived?
Yes. Yes, Ms. Gibson.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a request for an amendment to the agenda to include a discussion of the AMIRA software curriculum contract.
Okay. Put it on 6.01.
That would be great.
Mr. Cameras, will you go ahead and announce it for the record?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm also requesting that we add a first read of our internet services contract.
So that will become 6.02. First read of internet services contract.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Have we? I haven't made a motion.
I'm sorry.
I move that the amend the agenda be amended to include 6.01, a discussion of the AMIRA contract, and 6.02, the first read of the internet services contract.
So moved.
All right, so I've moved and it's been seconded by Ms. Page to include those. Okay. Oh, we need to. What's wrong? Yes, Attorney Lilly?
She said so moved, not seconded. She'd already made the motion.
Okay, I think she meant second, but go ahead.
Ms. Rizzi made a motion, so are you seconding any of that motion, Ms. Page? Or you said so moved rather than Ms. Rizzi made the motion.
Second.
All right, so it's been moved and properly seconded. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Ms. Dorr, Ms. White.
Yes.
Let the record reflect that Ms. White has arrived. Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed? Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Jones? Yes, motion passes.
Thank you. We are now at item 2.01, recognition of student representative.
We need to vote to adopt the agenda.
Okay, I'm moved. All right, okay, so we need to move to adopt the agenda. All right, anyone want to make that motion?
So moved.
Okay. It's been moved by Ms. Jones to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. White. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Ms. Dorr, Ms. White.
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed? Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We're now moving to 2.01, recognition of student representative.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am delighted to introduce Tadreama McBride from Open High School. Tadreama is a junior at Open where she participates in the Film Club and serves as a member of my Student Advisory Council. She is active in her community and has participated in multiple mural projects, spoken on panels, and advocated in support of various laws. Her work through Rise for Youth and Performing Statistics seeks to change the juvenile justice system and dismantle the school-to-prison pipeline. She also participates in Feed the Streets, Drums No Guns, and numerous other community service projects. In her spare time, she enjoys painting, drawing, writing, sewing, multimedia crafts, and animation. Upon graduation, she plans to attend a four-year college majoring in both business and art. She plans to launch her own art agency that supports other artists. Please join me in welcoming Tadreama McBride from Open High School.
Hello, my name is Tadrema and good evening, everyone. I would like to thank the school board and superintendent Cameras for extending the invitation to join you this evening. In addition, I would like to thank my principal at Open High School, Ms. Clary, for her unwavering support. I am honored to serve as a student representative this evening and look forward to learning more about the board process. Whether you're watching the news or on social media or speaking directly to students themselves, one thing is for certain. Children across the country are in crisis. For too far too many students are losing their lives to gun violence and struggling to cope with mental illness, leaving them barely functional in their academics. Compounding factors such as these can make students feel as if they're suffocating when it should be considered a positive experience. It really shouldn't be this difficult for students to maneuver through school. So finding balance between health and academics is imperative. That's why schools should consider cutting down the hours in the school day. I would like to suggest that RPS increase mental health support for students through the proposition yeah, through the proposition of licensed clinicians who are specially trained to counsel children and adolescents. One thing the youth needs more of is support and strength to be successful in the world. Having the having encouraging authority figures that understand that we're growing and experiencing life at the same time. Adults that believe in us and inspire us to do something great. Opening up the floor to conversations about serious topics allows students to connect more to each other and their teachers. This will cause students to be a part of the classroom and closer to their classmates. This is one thing that I like about my school that I wish that other schools would push more of. Permitting students to share their voices, unite, and create positive change, and that's what we really should be pushing for. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, next. Student presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm delighted to call up the Lucille M. Brown Middle School Choir. To welcome in the new season, the Brown Middle School Choir will sing "The Winter Wind" by Mary Donnelly and George L. O. Strid. The song describes both the harshness of winter and the peace of spring. Under the direction of Norman Hurt Jr., the Brown Middle School Choir is a mix of sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students who are excited to perform for you today. Please welcome the Brown Middle School Choir.
Thank you so much. That was beautiful. Lucille Brown Choir, if you'd come back down really quickly, we'd like to take a photo. Okay, we are now at 2.03, recognition of school social worker week.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to read the proclamation then have you all come on down. Sound good? All right. Whereas National School Social Work Week is an opportunity to celebrate Richmond Public Schools' social workers and acknowledge how they serve with love by providing social and emotional support that enables our students to achieve success in school and beyond. And whereas the social work profession strengthens the well-being of all people and especially those who are in most need. Whereas school social workers are vital members of our schools creating partnerships between the home, school, and community to ensure student success. And whereas RPS social workers contribute to the achievement of every student by acknowledging and affirming their unique gifts and ability to learn while also addressing social and economic challenges and inequities students may experience. And whereas RPS social workers collaborate with families to further the educational, personal, and social-emotional growth of their children and to navigate community resources to support and enrich their lives. Now therefore, be it resolved in recognition of the vital work performed by RPS school social workers, the school board of the City of Richmond, and Richmond Public Schools, join the School Social Work Association of America in recognizing the week of March 5th to 11th, 2023, as School Social Work Week and encourage all schools and community members to join in the celebration. Congratulations and come on down for a picture.
Ms. Page, I think you should probably do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tina. We will now have our recognition of national board certified teachers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Whereas National Board Certification is a voluntary professional development process that recognizes expert teachers who meet rigorous standards of performance. And whereas National Board Certification is the most respected education certification in the United States. And whereas the National Board Certified Teacher Program was designed to develop, retain, and recognize accomplished teachers and to foster ongoing improvement in schools nationwide. And whereas Richmond Public Schools encourages teachers to seek National Board Certification in all subject areas and grade bands. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the school board of the City of Richmond and Richmond Public Schools hereby celebrate Andrea Bryan of Lucille Brown Middle School for receiving National Board Certification, and Ella Lee Kimberly Coleman, Christina Mitchell, Crystal Mark, and Daniel Zippur for renewing their National Board Certification and call upon all schools and community members to join in this celebration. Congratulations. And do we have any of those folks here tonight? We do. We got one. All right, come, oh, two, three, come on down. Congratulations. They're on the list. Good to see you guys again. Why don't you go in the middle?
Yes. First time I get some of that.
Oh, yes. Congratulations, baby.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay, we are now at item 3.01, public information. Madam Clerk?
Conduct of speakers. Speakers shall speak, state their full legal name prior to addressing the school board. Speakers will address the school board as a whole rather than individual school board members, the division superintendent, school board attorney, clerk, or any other staff member. The school board will listen to comments but will not respond during the public information period. Persons appearing before the board will not be allowed to one, campaign for public office, two, promote private business ventures, or three, use profanity or vulgar language. If a community member's comments during the public information session relate to school-based issues, the chair may refer that individual to Richmond Public Schools Administration for one-on-one consultation and follow-up. It is important that all community members who wish to participate in the public information period abide by the guidelines set forth in this policy. Refuse to abide by that policy, by the policy will result in the forfeiture of remaining time that has been allotted to the speaker. Community members may express their views in writing in lieu of any oral presentation. Comments received in writing in lieu of an oral presentation will not be read during the meeting, but shall be posted to the school board platform board notes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have one speaker who has signed up, and that is Mr. Dwayne Johnson. Excuse me? Okay, I have Dwayne Johnson here on the list, but you may come up and get in line. Anyone else who would like to speak can follow. Please write your full name and let us know what your name is once you begin speaking. Thank you.
James R. Smith. I'm with Teamsters Local 592 in Richmond, Virginia. Thursday before last, we won exclusive representative of the administration's staff, which includes principals, APs, and supervisors. Just wanted to thank the board for this opportunity. We look forward to partnering with you collectively bargaining and having a beneficial relationship that will benefit our new members and RPS alongside of that. And just wanted to thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Did you sign in?
I will.
All right, thank you. Where's the clipboard? Is the clipboard up there? Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
I'll take care of Mr. Smith.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Philip Kennedy, and I'm an Eagle. I'm a fifth-grade teacher at the Fairfield Court Elementary School where we are in the business of educating kids and creating relationships throughout shared lived experiences with confidence, expectations, greatness, and grit. If you have not had a chance to visit our community, I and my fellow coworkers would like to extend you an invitation. I'm here tonight to seek your support in approving RPS 200 school year for the Fairfield Court Elementary School. In doing so, I am asking you to consider the question, what can happen when a school and its community of teachers, parents, and caretakers agree and become aligned on a concept that they see as important and beneficial through teamwork, commitment, and service with love? Please support extending the school year for the Fairfield Court Eagle Scholars where we are all born to soar. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Please let the record reflect that Dr. Harris Mohammed has arrived.
Good evening. I'm Renarda Bacon, and it's my daughter, Ramaya Bacon. Say hello.
Hi.
I'm a proud parent of a student, my daughter, Fairfield Court Elementary School. And I am a concerned parent as well. Ms. Cheryl Burke is our school board leader. And Principal Wright is a fabulous principal. She does everything, nothing but the best for us, for the students at the school and the parents as well. As a parent of Fairfield Court Elementary School, I just want our students to make sure that they have everything they need, and Principal Wright does that. And Principal, assistant principal Henderson and the whole entire staff. And it's good that they do go to school, you know, extra 20 days. It definitely helped them academically, you know. And, you know, the school is fully accredited, so it'll be a big help to the students to be able to get their reading and math and science up. So I do support that, the 200 days of school. You want to say something, or just real quick? Go ahead. Y'all have a good one.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Tanya Myers. I'd like to say good evening to the parents, friends, educators, and Richmond City School Board. I'm confident as I stand before you today to advocate in support of the year-round school for Fairfield Court Elementary. I'm a veteran of the education industry, both public and private. And through my personal company and those that I contract with, I have the unique opportunity to observe students in multiple districts and multiple ages. I've already been to about 60 schools from August to now. And so without a doubt, I'd rate Fairfield Court very high. And you say high in what? Well, in several areas, and this was based on student behavior and visible investment from the administration and the staff. At one point, the staff was functioning so well throughout the building as a group, as a unit, as a body, that I had to stop and try to figure out where the principal was and where the teachers were because they all worked together for the excelling of the students. As a parent who has served as a PTA volunteer, past president on the local or school level, the county council representative, a district president, which includes nine locales in the surrounding Richmond district area, and a member of the state board, it was easy to see the dedication and commitment in this building because the leadership team of this school has already presented a plan as to what they would do with the additional days. And given their current accreditation, I do support this year-round school because it will provide additional opportunities to push ahead for the students since they've already met the current bars that have been set. Those opportunities would include possibly tutoring. Those opportunities would include possibly tutoring, STEM or STEAM opportunities, field trips, whether virtual or other, and more. So I ask you tonight to please support them in their endeavors to move ahead as they continue to create a space of standards, equality, family, and opportunity at Fairfield Court Elementary. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, good evening, super-dedicate cameras, school board members. My name is Amelia Castaneda, and I've had the privilege of serving thousands of our English learner families the past five years, welcoming them for the first time to our district. I come here today to share my concerns with the preliminary report of the Latino English learner students task force. I want to preface by saying that I wholeheartedly believe in the urgency to prioritize our English learner students and to work together in addressing the many needs that are still unmet and that we continue to see day-to-day in our office and in our schools. However, I also believe we should do this in a transparent, thoughtful, and inclusive process. Ever since the approved motion to accept the preliminary recommendation from Task Force on February the 20th, I've had the opportunity to speak with four different Task Force community members and different subcommittees. All four were surprised of what was included in the recommendation, and all were also surprised it was put forth for approval and the motion was passed. This prompted more questions about the process. Who all made up the task force? Aside from board docs, how else is the larger community hearing about this process? What assessment tool was utilized to capture family and student feedback? More importantly, where is the documented data of this feedback that was collected prior to the preliminary report? I also looked at what was not included. We hear a lot about the trauma our students and families experienced before setting foot in the classroom, but there is no mention of mental health support specific to our community or support for students with limited or interrupted formal education, which we see rising, students who are over age and under credit, and students who may not be interested, who may be interested in an alternative educational setting or path. This is a big undertaking and one that should not be rushed without the voices of the impacted community. So as you continue this work, I would encourage the board to request the necessary data so that when we move forward with the work, the recommendations and everything is implemented, implementation is done in a meaningful and a productive way. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, super-dedicate cameras, Chair Rizzi, Vice Chair Burke, and all the members of the school board. My name is Angela Wright, and I just want to come up here again upon waving support for RPS Extended Day Program. I'm excited to let you know that within two weeks, we were able to get all except one of our parents to vote. We had a 99% participation rate. And with that, we had 90.3% of our parents in favor of the 200-day support. So I just think that it really shows to the commitment as we had people to speak here earlier in reference to that. But I want to dig a little bit deeper because those first 20 days, I know you want to know what that's going to look like, but I want you to remember this quote as we plan those first 20 days. If you fail to plan, you plan to fail. So in those first 20 days with routine and procedures, and as we're looking at our PALS data and our SWO data, which we will get in the spring, before we, we will have everything all planned out, which is actually what we already have. So again, as others have said, please come out to the school. We'll be more than willing to share and support the work that we're doing and the work we will continue to do. Because Fairfield Court will continue to soar because we're Eagles, and that's what we do. But we have a staff that's committed. We have a staff that works hard, and AP Henderson is out there. She's amazing. Ms. Granderson, I have to give her a shout out because she helps support it. And that's the whole piece about a leadership team and collective efficacy. Everybody does their part to make it a whole. So I'm going to continue to advocate for my school. I'm going to continue to advocate for our students because it's what's in the best interest of Fairfield Court and Richmond Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Karma Morrison. I am here representing New Era. We are a community-based organization, and we have been organizing and advocating for Ms. Sheila Roberts. I'm a product of Richmond Public Schools. Ms. Burke was my assistant principal or my principal. I can't remember which one. But when I see her, my, I get like a smile in my heart. Because elementary school in Richmond Public Schools when I went over 30 years ago was a great place to be. I have talked to myself about coming here. And the main question that I want to ask is whether or not if what happened to Ms. Roberts' daughter happened to your child, would the principal still be in place? If this was your kids, Jason, we would not be here. That principal would not still be in place.
Ma'am, I just want to remind you, you can't point directly to people in classrooms. Thank you.
All right. I am standing here because I don't believe that the parents of Blackwell, and I'm a parent too, I have a kid at Blackwell, are being treated fairly. I don't think our kids are being treated fairly. When I went to school, my principals were the cream of the crop. Now, last year, when my sons came to Blackwell Preschool, I tried to understand Elaine. I tried to-
Again, specific names.
I tried to understand. You said, I thought you said pointing. I didn't hear you say specific names. I apologize. I tried to understand the principal at Blackwell. I emailed. I communicated. I asked that she not do things. I'm sorry. I asked that she not do things like threaten the parents to have police, police action taken against them. I requested that. I told her that in a specific meeting, she said, "Your kids are not going to be kidnapped," and that triggered me because I never thought about my child being kidnapped at school.
Time.
Is that two minutes or five?
Three minutes.
I thought it was five for organization.
Did you identify yourself as an organization?
I did. I did. So I am, I am standing here saying that as a parent, I tried to get a parent organization at Blackwell Preschool. The principal there stopped me at every single email. She disrespected me and the other parents. I tried everything. I had to go over her head in order to get a parent organization started. I finally did. And she refused to send the link out for the parents to join the meeting. I had to ask her at that time, "Please, sing the, send the link out." Because she was in front of some colleagues, she did it. And parents joined the meeting. I joined this organization. And at this very meeting, some months ago, about a month ago, she stood up and said what happened to her. My organization started to organize. But I knew that regardless of whether or not what Ms. Roberts said was true, the steps that were supposed to be taken to protect her daughter and what, and the other young lady were not taken by the principal. And when she called, she was hung up on. Now, what I'm saying to you is-
Thirty seconds.
When we called to the school, when we tried to get to the school, she says we're disrespectful, we're nasty, she calls the police. She's going to call the police on us. That's the same thing she did to Shayla. She's trying to stop us from having a voice. And we are not going to continue to stand for it. We love our kids. It's proven, it's shown that she is not in the same mind frame.
Time.
Help us.
Thank you.
So yes, I'm Shayla, Madeline mom. So now my son is being targeted at school by Richmond Public Schools Transportation. My son is seven years old. I need, I need answers. I need action done. I have until Friday to get action done for what happened to my daughter. That principal needs to be gone Friday. And I'm not going to keep talking to anyone. I'm not going to keep getting meetings after meetings after meetings because now my son is being targeted. So we have an issue now, and it has to come to an end. My son was basically a bus driver, threatened me through my son and told my son what happened to my daughter. I don't express that to my son what happened to her. So we have an issue now. Something needs to get resolved. I have until Friday. If not, if I know that, that principal said that, because this is what it all boils down to, this principal. Like I stated, if there was a mother and a child came to that school abused, y'all would have snatched that little child from their parents. But since it's a principal, we have protocol. There was no protocol when my daughter was held in a bathroom and I'm asking for my child. There was no protocol. So answer, why is she still there? Why was she on a leave of absence and she's there? It doesn't make any sense to me, and I have no answers. My daughter has done everything, even things I didn't want her to do because of protocol. But when it comes down to me needing answers for my daughter, I don't get none of that. So when, when is the action going to start? Because I have until Friday for action. If this principal is still here, I just don't know because at this point, it's ridiculous. My daughter cannot go to the bathroom by herself. She is scared. The only option I'm given is, oh, transfer to a different school. Okay, transfer to a different school. She's still going to be scared of the bathroom. That's the issue right now. Like, it's, it's getting to the point where I keep coming to these meetings after meeting, after meeting, after meeting, and nothing is done. I have take off of work for meetings. Nothing is done. I get the same answer every time. I have the protocol in my face, and what the principal didn't do is report it within 24 hours. I reported it almost three weeks later, and nothing is still being done. Nothing is being done. My son has been dragged into this by a Richmond Public School bus drive at this point. I called the school on that Friday morning, and I expressed to them what happened at the bus stop. My son comes home to this bus driver telling him that I was, that I'm lying about my daughter. We have a real problem. And I'm saying Friday, that's my last time. Friday is it for me. I cannot take it no more. I'm done being calm because I feel like no one is respecting me as a mother. And that's that. So Friday, that's it. I'm gone. Friday. Madeline Hurt, Friday.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. Thank you for the recognition and the support. I am thankful for the support and then guidance I received through VCU and RPS. Achieving National Board was something that I really wanted to do since I became a teacher. And I obsessed over that, less than a point, that it took me five years to get. That leads me to what I want to talk to you guys about. So for lack of a better way to say it, I'm neurodivergent. I have autism and I have ADHD. I was diagnosed in August. And I was one of a large percentage of women who was misdiagnosed with bipolar disorder just to find out, years later, 10 years of therapy for one thing, that I have something totally different that explains everything. And there are no amounts of medications and therapies that are going to fix all of that. What I came today to talk about is the last eight months of me knowing my diagnoses have left me in a very weird place. Being diagnosed with bipolar comes with a lot of stigmas. It leaves you feeling as though you are being irrational all the time. You're being all over the place. You can't control yourself. And that's the stigma that is given to a person with that diagnosis, a diagnosis. Now, understanding what autism is and bipolar, excuse me, and ADHD are, I am finding that in education where we are constantly doing IEPs, we're constantly having students go get diagnosed, we're recognizing certain patterns of behavior, that we do all that for the students, but what are we doing for our teachers? Our young lady, our student speaker spoke about the wellness and the, can't even get the words out right now because I'm anxious. The self-care, the support, the wellness of our students. But when it comes all together, you need wellness for your parents, I mean, excuse me, your teachers and your students. I can't support my students as effectively as I would like if I constantly feel like my needs aren't being met.
Thirty seconds.
And I just want to express that simple things, like you'd be surprised just knowing what's, when a meeting is going to happen, knowing when you're going to have something that's going to be discussed and you may be called upon. Those are things that I think neurotypical people take for granted, but it could change so much for somebody like me when something small can derail my day. And I literally have to force myself to say, my students are more important. I'm going to follow the plan, and my students are more accepting than the adults. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. Thanks for listening to us all and being a part of the solution here. I'd like to address the school board today as a mother of three, soon to be four students at John B. Carey Elementary, who again, wants to continue to be part of a solution.
Please state your name.
My name is Colleen Wallace. My eldest child has an in-depth IEP, and due to multiple teacher resignations, has been struggling to academically progress throughout the school year. I know he's not alone, and this is not about my child, but a whole community in need. I'm trying to understand why the district struggles to aid these exceptional education students, particularly post-COVID. I came across the itemized budget stating that a near 45% decrease in the sped sector of RPS. What an incredible disservice to children, families, and most importantly, staff in whom we trust and continually have unrealistic expectations in. I thought it was quite synchronous that I was following this last speaker. Due to logistics and lack of resources, our school at John B. Carey implements one class per grade be quote inclusive. I'm here to emphasize, number one, as a parent, what an incredible discriminatory and glass ceiling it feels as though is being put on my child and others with needs. Secondly, if this strategy is necessary, then why are we not focused on aiding these inclusive classes with excess human resources for the holistic good of students and teachers? It doesn't just affect special education students, but the class and community as a whole. I plan to participate in the Special Education Advisory Committee, and without doubt, will be bringing this forth at the next meeting on March 29th. We and other parents and teachers at John B. Carey can tell you firsthand that there is an inadequate learning environment daily with excessively large, small groups and challenging behaviors creating the inability to truly serve students and their peers. By single-handedly reducing sped budget, you are degrading the system as a whole, whether someone has a 504 IEP or not. Teacher resignations will continue in droves if we continue down this path, and the basic right to an education will continue to decline and be taken away from children, particularly with excess needs. I encourage the district leaders to implement a long-term strategic staffing plan or an emergency pool of educators for situations that our fourth-grade Carey students, I'm sure among many others, have been faced with, faced with. To put fuel on the fire, at John B. Carey, there seems a minstrel strife between staff and administration. As a parent new to the school, I ignored rumors over the summer about administrative challenges. I encourage you to review the Dreams for RPS Teacher Satisfaction Survey. Note the 13% approval for multiple questions. Again, 26% approval for feeling respected by schools administrators. I understand many things are out of control right now for many people. I know teacher shortage is unprecedented level. But if we aren't even listening to our existing teachers, how do we expect to retain? teachers, how do we expect to retain them? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Madam Chair, we have four minutes left on the 30-minute time period.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Good evening to the board. I'm here representing Elite Education Consulting, also in coalition with Dignity Schools Campaign. So I have an organization that I'm working with. I am Dr. Mala Faith Crawford. I'm not an unfamiliar face to this board. What I'm hearing from these parents is appalling. Part of the problem that we have is what the school board is doing with the misappropriation of funds. The school board has already spent over $60,000 to just fight me for a bill in special education. That, you paying a lawyer. As your lawyer would tell you next week, this week really, it's made the docket to the Supreme Court of United States. So you gotta get ready, cause I'm ready. You all need to look at how to properly educate our children and give these teachers to support they need. You giving monies to lawyers when I was gonna settle my bill for 40% of the bill and the rest go to the children? That's what's happening. That's what's happening. You need to call some of the veteran teachers. Sheriff Burke, call some of us. I worked at Shimmer, Ross, and Benford, all the schools around. This stuff with this Common Core, it shouldn't have came from DC and Maryland. Mr. Cameras, keep in mind, I'm an educator in Maryland and DC. We don't, no, I, I haven't got my three minutes.
No, 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 you, you're referring directly to.
Oh, I apologize to you, but I'm telling you, it shouldn't have came because a seasoned teacher, I knew what the problem was. You don't have curriculum and instructional principals and assistant principals and curriculum instructional people that are talented to know how to do an alignment of the curriculum. There's nothing wrong with Common Core, but you have to be aligned it because a person that was knowledgeable in the field would have known that the eighth grade standards on Common Core correlates with the third grade standards in the SOLs. You're ha, you're paying lawyers to fight your due process hearing. I am not a lawyer, but I kicked the socks off lawyers' butt. I just won a case today. I'm, I had Richmond Public Schools to pay 130 some thousand dollars for a child to receive virtual instruction during the pandemic because I don't give up. I am in town to stay. I'm separating myself from Maryland within the next year or two. And I'm gonna be on a throne in the side. I am a product of this school district and I'm five degrees later. I had my baby when I was 16, going to Armstrong Kennedy High School, Kennedy Building. Ms. Somerset taught me how to take care of my son. Those are the type of educators I come from. You need to turn to some of your veterans and ask them, can you come with us and just work on the curriculum? They can get it done. We are from the old school. I've offered to provide professional development to this school district at no cost. In special ed, no one returned a call. Not even when I offered to give a thousand dollars to help with the food drought for these children during the pandemic. You all are so bent out because I hurt your feelings? No, you hurting our children and their parents. They shouldn't be crying to people like me and then you get angry and want to teach me a lesson because what you all, what the school board did to me, what, what happened to me, was at advisement of a lawyer. I'm not the one you need to fight. You need to partner with me. Because I can show your people how to get it done. These administrative hearings, your person over special ed should have enough knowledge on how to handle this for the school board. You should not have to pay hurl and chambers, all that money. You shouldn't have to do it. Cause it's an administrative hearing. I know the facts. RPS would not hire me as an assistant director of special ed and I have a PhD in special ed leadership. I'm leaving tomorrow to go to Brussels to present my research in, in Germany. Already been to France. That's what you got in front of you. You need administrators that are curriculum instructional bound. You need to find highly qualified people to run your school district from the office down. You need to look at a plan. I'm just across the water in the neighboring county. I live in Chesterfield. This is utterly ridiculous. We don't have enough counseling and support services for our students and you're supposed to be providing it for parents too, because that parent should not be traumatized. IDA says provide support and counseling and training to the parents so they can assist in the education of their children. I can line them up and do a due process complaint on each and every one of them. And I promise you, you all not doing it.
Thank you. Thus concludes our public information session. All right, we're moving on. Item four, board business, 4.01, Discussion of Socio-Emotional Learning Organization. So board colleagues, this is an item that's on the agenda because it was requested. And I don't know that Mr. Cameras has anything to present. So this is a board discussion. 4.01, Discussion of Socio-Emotional Learning Organization. I think there were several board members who requested it. Yeah, I mean, I think that this has to do with requests that were made about reorganizing socio-emotional learning supports in the district. Dr. Harris Mohammed.
I don't think in particular, we were asking, board members were asking for an organization. I think from, from my understanding, the discussion from several school board members wanted to know what it was going to look like. Also, how impacting, which has not been shared or discussed by the administration of reorganizing, um, the community engagement team to lend support to the culture and climate team, that's where this conversation came from. It was directly and intentionally driven by those two pieces that are supposed to be aligned to provide certain supports to our students. So when I saw this item, I, I don't recall asking for an update or discuss about the organization or when I, when I reorganization, I'm thinking, um, a nonprofit or something like that. But yes, is there any, is there any information on, um, how we're going to better utilize the culture and climate team and the community engagement team and how to allow our social workers, um, since we're honoring them? And I do apologize for missing that moment because I support our social workers, but it is my understanding that, you know, to get around, um, getting these plans done, now we have asked them to do 15-day plans. And the board, um, supported them focusing on what they needed to focus on. And so, yes, the, all of that is a part of socio-emotional learning because if we continue to pull our social workers to do plans that the community engagement family lazyons can be doing, then they, our social workers will never get to, and we had this long extended discussion. I don't want to have the discussion about that anymore, but I can reiterate the importance of this board supporting the roles of our social workers and they need to get back to doing what we hired them to do and stop sneaking around. If that is what's happening, finding a loophole is what we call it, to have them do some, do plans and, and take them away from servicing our children. Because here's the thing, we say socio-emotional learning is important. And I think Ms. Jones said this, what does that look like? And if it's really important, then why aren't we really making it a factor, a priority? That's not happening in our school division. So, um, I asked Attorney Lilly to pull the motion again to make sure that we are as a division, supporting what our motion stated. And I hope we're not trying to find a loophole to use the social workers out of their area. But they need to be social working, and I know that's not a word, but they, that's what they need to be doing for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think, um, this socio and emotional learning conversation also was just stemming around when we were talking about the budget and just putting together a comprehensive plan of what that would look like to include culture and climate. Something else, it was culture and climate and, um, I think safety and security, something. We, I think that's where that, yeah, where that conversation lent itself to. But I think, to be honest, since we haven't discussed it since the last meeting, it may be something we want to kind of chat about and then put together some kind of plan to bring forward or talk to the superintendent about a presentation that they can bring forward to us.
Thank you. Ms. Burke.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, the engagement team as well as the, um, Mrs. Jones's team with the social workers and the support persons, they get a lot of things done. And I'm thinking in terms of my district because I see them in my district working. So I agree with Mrs. Jones at some point allowing them. I think it's a lot of overlap there as well because I, I don't know who's doing the attendance now. I'm assuming that it's, uh, Dr. Harris's team, the engagement team. And so far, the social workers report, as stated earlier, I don't know what the plan is that they have, but we, we must have plans moving forward in order to go to the next level. I do look forward to the socio-emotional, the whole piece being addressed. There's not enough support in place. So my suggestion is, Madam Chair, if we have, um, those two departments to come together and present at another board meeting exactly what they're doing and so that we can see what's going on. I don't want to move forward and say, this is my plan as a board, when we haven't heard from them, because there is a collective effort there. So, um, that's my suggestion. And may I also say this? When we met for, may I say, in regards to, when we met for our agenda setting, we have a list, um, Chair Wizzi, the superintendent, myself, we have a list of everything everybody suggested and there's a long list. So we're trying to pull, I believe, two items from, for each meeting so that we make sure we are addressing the business at hand as well as our requests. And this was a request. So every, every month, every, we should see at least four to the first of the month, to the end of our list of suggestions of what to list. So that's my suggestion to come together, have a presentation so we can see what they're doing, how things are overlapping, how they are in support of each other. Cause I've seen a lot of that, the social workers and the Department of Engagement together. So that's what I look forward to and then going forward with the plan. And they're the experts in that area and I respect that.
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
I just wanted to add an additional caveat that also was a part of the conversation with the city because they were talking about the services that were overlapping. And we said that we wanted to be able to have our, um, Office of Engagement, social workers, all of those things, because we're doing our own work and so we want to be able to have that. So I think that's another space where the conversation was kind of raised, is so that we can show what we are doing, um, and what we have in place prior to, I guess, move into whatever, um, compilation of services that they were referring to.
Ms. White and then Mr. Cameras.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I just want to add to that, um, I would like to see in that presentation, what it looks like for tier one, tier two, tier three systems included in the collaborative task with the culture and climate, the engagement team and the security. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cameras, you.
I just wanted to note per Ms. Jones's comment about the involvement of the city in, in some of the overlap. Um, I believe Councilmember Lynch is organizing a meeting for that. I think she calls it asset mapping of all the different, uh, agencies that are touching on these issues. So, um, I think that is the follow-up from the joint meeting that we had with council.
Thank you. So what I'm hearing is that board members are requesting, um, a plan for how socio-emotional, the socio-emotional needs of our students are being addressed and how safety and security, culture and climate and community engagement work in synchrony to, um, address those, uh, needs. Is that something that we could ask for, for just RPS, not including the city? Mr. Cameras?
Yes.
Okay, we will look forward to it. Any other comments, board members? Ms. Burke?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just for, um, clarity, and I'm glad the superintendent brought up remembering the conversation that we had when we met with city council. So I do recall that once we fully assess what we have in place, because someone did state that the city may be working with the family and so are we as a school system. So they stated they would be willing to pay for an agency to come in if we so decided. So moving forward, once we get the reports, I just ask that we keep that on, on the table, if that's going to help our student body better, since they do have the funds. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. We will now move to item 4.02, Receive Update on Legal Services RFP Process.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Because this process is still underway, there's not a lot that I can share publicly other than to say that, um, the bids are being evaluated and the rubric is there on the presentation and we hope to be able to bring a contract for the board's first read consideration, um, at our first meeting in April.
Thank you. Ms. Jones?
Thanks, Madam Chair. I just had a quick question for the, um, legal services. The committee that is comprised, that's located in this document, are those the only departments that this contract will service? Because if not, how will we make a decision based on departments that may not, may or may not be included if they're not at the table?
Those are the departments that are on the committee, but they are, um, of course, looking at the full scope of the, uh, offers and, uh, you know, representing the entire organization. Again, um, making sure that they meet, uh, as it is indicated here, all of the requirements of the RFP, which, um, span all parts of the organization.
Any other questions, comments? All right, thank you. Next, we move to item 5.01, Receive for Action, The Personnel Items.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have this evening 20, uh, individuals nominated for hire, change of contract of 13 individuals, 13 resignations, five terminations of employment, one retirement, and unfortunately, one employee who passed away.
Ms. White, then Ms. Gibson and then Ms. Jones.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I would like to request that the board discuss and vote on, uh, these separately by cabinet levels as well as, uh, directorate position and close.
Thank you. Ms. Jones, did you?
Yeah, I think mine's is closed as well.
Okay. All right, thank you. We will then go into closed, um, when it's time to discuss these. All right, 5.02, Receive for Action Superintendent/Agent Update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. With, uh, the departure of Ms. Hudasko, I am nominating Ms. Fox to serve as my agent. Madam Chair, so moved.
Second. Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Young to accept the superintendent's, uh, ask that Ms. Fox be the, um, oh goodness, agent, right? The superintendent agent and seconded by Ms. Burke. Roll call vote. Madam Clerk.
Ms. Dore. Ms. White.
No.
Ms. Gibson.
Abstain.
Mr. Young.
Hi.
Ms. Wizzi.
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed.
No.
Ms. Burke.
Yes.
Ms. Page.
Ms. Jones?
Abstain.
Motion fails.
Thank you. I will nominate Dr. Harris is currently my deputy agent and so I will nominate her as my agent and Ms. Parks as my deputy agent.
Madam Chair, so moved.
Second.
It's been moved to have Dr. Harris serve as the agent and Ms. Parks serve as deputy agent. Seconded, I mean, it's been moved by Mr. Young and seconded by Ms. Jones. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Dorr? Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Muhammad?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Page? Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Motion pass. Motion passes, sorry.
Thank you. 5.03, receive for action, the Patrick Henry School for Science and Arts Charter renewal.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As shared last time, I am recommending that we renew the charter with the adjustments as indicated on board docs.
Any discussion? Okay. Dr. Harris Muhammad?
I would like to make the motion to accept the renewal of the Patrick Henry Charter application.
Second.
Dr. Harris Muhammad has moved that we accept the renewal of the Patrick Henry Charter. And it's been seconded by Doc, I mean, by Mr. Young. Roll call vote? Yes.
Madam Chair, I spoke to how grateful I am to Patrick Henry last, last meeting, so I'll be brief. But I did want to reiterate that because the school is so special or students are afforded an opportunity unlike, to be real blunt, any of our other schools, specifically because of the integrated curriculum, because how they convene every Friday to celebrate caught you, caught you, doing something that too infrequently in other places goes unnoticed, because it's the most diverse school in the city of Richmond, at least at the, at the elementary level, and because of their commitment to incorporate or including all of their parents, all of their stakeholders. In fact, that's a part of, it's a part of the charter that we're approving this evening. My only regret is, my only regret is that we have but one Patrick Henry, God knows, I would love more, but a most special place and it's terrific to see Chair of the Board, our CEO stepped out. She's on a phone call, Ms. Tarnie Hudson, in the rear of the room, somebody who's invested her significant, significant part of her career in RPA. So, Madam Chair, thank you for indulging me, bludgeoning me for the opportunity, but very special place. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Dorr? Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Muhammad?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Ms. Jones? Yes.
Motion passes.
Moving on to 6.01, discussion of AMIRA contract.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I shared earlier today with the school board, AMIRA is an intervention that uses an artificial intelligence avatar that listens to kids read and responds using the science of reading. It's very cutting edge and we are offering it as an optional opportunity in second and third grades for a subset of our schools. It costs $20 per student and we bought a couple of thousand licenses for our students at a cost of approximately $70,000 using ARP funds. Again, it is, it's an intervention that is used during small group rotation time to complement our suite of interventions. Happy to take any questions.
Questions? Yes, Ms. White?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have a couple of questions, Mr. Cameras. Can you give us the schools that actually this was put in place for? And you said it's a cutting-edge program. Can you show me in the evidence clearinghouse where this has been used on urban schools like Richmond Public Schools? Because when I'm looking at it, it looks like they're still building it and refining it. And why would it just be placed in second and third grades right now? And the parents as well as teachers, teachers have a lot on their plate now. And I know that this is actually coordinating with already. So when do they have time to be trained on this? And also, what does this coordinate into everyday tasks for teachers?
I can share with you the schools. Let me pull it up. Obama, Blackwell, Ginter Park, Miles Jones, Bellevue, Francis, Fairfield Court, Overby, Timberazzo, and Westover. Happy to share the research with you. I don't have it all at my fingertips. And I think that was your second question.
Also, I just wanted to know, where's the evidence that this tool is the same that can be used on urban schools like Richmond Public Schools? And also, the company that this coming from, is this the same company that is also Read 180 that we have in Richmond Public Schools?
I don't believe it is the same company as Read 180, but I'll certainly check that and I'll gather the research for it.
Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was hoping Mr. Cameras could speak to the process for the contract being adopted. I understand that he signed off on a sole source contract and I just am wanting to understand the timeframe and the rationale for that.
Yes, I most certainly did because it is a one-of-a-kind educational offering. There's nothing else like it currently available. And so it qualifies for the sole source provision.
And I guess perhaps our legal counsel, Ms. Lilly, if you could speak. So the board did not approve a $70,000 contract and so I'm, I'm wanting to understand why this, this would not have come to the board or, and I, and so also it's like if it's a pilot, like how many years? Because I'm not sure why it's just a $70,000 contract when I'm assuming that it would be, you know, multiple years. I just, I'm trying to understand, you know, why we're now approving it after the fact. And then I would also like to make a motion because as background, I've asked for documentation and I, we were told that I would have to submit a FOIA, which would there be charges for? And so I have a lot of unease that as a public official who is looking to represent the, the best interests and to protect the, ensure that we are good fiscal agents of the district, that when I'm asking for documentation specific to contracts, I, you know, haven't received it and then will be charged a fee to do the work of governing. So it is really very important to understand that. And then I'm also going to make a motion to see if my board colleagues will support suspending any fees to be able to receive that information.
If I may, Madam Chair. My understanding, and I would ask the board clerk to speak to this, is there was a misunderstanding in terms of their request for the information as it pertains to FOIA. I happily and freely shared all the information with the school board this morning and I'm happy to answer any other questions about this or anything else. By board policy, contracts over $250,000 come to the school board, but contracts below that do not. We have many, many of various amounts. Again, so that is, that is why the contract did not come to the board.
Ms. Lilly, are you going to chime in or?
Yes, I was gonna, I have your policy up and Superintendent is correct with respect to the, to the authority, the threshold with, upon which contracts need to come to you. So even if this was not a sole source, and sole sources are different categories, sole sources have the Division Superintendent's approval with the proper documentation. I'm reading from, or looking at Policy 3-3.4 for your reference. So even if it was not a sole source, the threshold amount of 70,000 would not have come before the board.
Thank you. Ms. Gibson?
Sorry, thank you. So reading that policy, under Policy 3-3.4, purchasing, it says that all contracts in essence, in excess of $25,000, regardless of type and term, must be reported to the school board at the next appropriate meeting in write, in written form in a format agreed upon between the Division Superintendent and the school board. So even if we did not need to approve the contract, we would still need to be receiving this contract. And my feeling is, is that I'm not seeing a lot of contracts come through for school board review. I'm, and so we haven't seen this contract. And furthermore, this is a pilot program, right? So this is something that, you know, is a large initiative that's going to impact many of our students. And so, and this is AI, right? So we're talking about, you know, something that is rather untested as a means of supporting students in our classrooms. So, so I, I want to be clear, I've asked for a copy of the original RFP that was used to procure this contract. And, and then the company, which is HMH, I don't recall the owner of AMIRA, I've asked to see all of the invoices to that company. And this is not information, again, that I feel that board members should be paying for as we are doing the work to govern the school district. And so I made that request. I have not received that request. And so at this point, I would like to move forward with a motion to, to get that information.
Again, if I may, Madam Chair, I'm happy to provide that information. I will make sure that it is provided tomorrow. Again, there is not an RFP because it was sole source, but happy to provide you all of the procurement documentation. I'll make sure that the board gets that tomorrow.
Ms. White?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. But what really concerns me is we are under a MOU with instruction and curriculum and we were going to do some changes on the curriculum and instruction. And I'm just shocked that the board never knew anything about this new program that was implemented into the schools. And you named a couple of schools and I'm concerned why it wasn't all of the elementary schools that are in need. I don't believe that you, I'm not sure, did you call Carver? Because I didn't hear that. And you said this was specifically for reading. So I am concerned, if you have a small palette, why is it not going out to all the elementary schools?
We just wanted to start where schools were volunteering to try it out. Again, this is completely optional and so did not want to force anything. If teachers and schools find it to be useful and helpful, then we'll look at using it more broadly. And if they don't, we won't. But again, wanted to do this on a completely voluntary basis.
And my, a follow-up. And so who will be managing this program and collecting the data?
It'll be managed ultimately in, under the leadership of Dr. Wiggins.
And how long will this palette program run so that the board can receive the data?
Yeah, we'll look at the data at the end of this school year and I'm happy to report out on it, see what worked, what didn't, and make recommendations thereafter.
Ms. Gibson?
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. So, so following up on the FOIA, on January 25th, Ms. Jeanne Baucher submitted a FOIA for Terms of Service for AMIRA, the contract between AMIRA and Richmond Public Schools. And in response to that RFP, into that FOIA request, the parent received a contract, Contract 6883M, School Board of the City of Richmond Professional Non-Purposes Services Contract. And it says, and it's got the date of April 2020, the 30th of April 2020. And that was in response to RFP 18-6883-11, web-based learning digital software. So, so that was, that is what was provided to this parent who was inquiring about this, about this software. And so now, I feel like, why did we send this parent that contract dated in 2020 if now we're saying there was no RFP and this was provided sole source?
I don't know. I would have to look at it. This was not on the agenda when I prepared for this evening. So I'm happy to look at all the documentation. And as I said, everything that we have, I'm happy to share it all with the board tomorrow.
Ms. Richardson, could you provide any clarification?
I can't provide clarification on that particular FOIA request because I've processed over 31 of them this month. So if you would give me an opportunity to go back and look back into the notes and understand the sequence of events that occurred with that particular FOIA, I'd be very glad to share that with you all as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Dr. Harris Muhammad?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I don't want to stretch the point in any way, but I know we have often talked about supporting the ideas of programs that come to the board. And, and I am one that, I'm all for that. I, I don't have a problem standing firm with supporting a program, an idea, a vision that is going to produce better student outcomes. My concern continues to be, which is not a new concern, so do not ever get it twisted because it's not new. $70,000 is nowhere, it's not even a concern because when we look at our budget, that's really a drop in the budget. But to build capacity, particularly in an area where the division has demonstrated through current evidence and data that we are struggling, particularly in the area of reading, transparency matters when we're seeking support. And so I, I don't, I want to, as a school board member, continue to use the data and the evidence to make sound decisions. I will never waver from that. Not today, not tomorrow, not in the future. My concern is the lack of communication that was forwarded, the board members about this program. Hey, we got a new program. We, we, the data shows that we're struggling in this. We improve it in these areas. I want to try this out. Schools want to try this out. And building administrators, please understand publicly, that they have the full autonomy to implement best instructional practices. But it's not up to the building principals to communicate that with us. And so I continue to ask as a board member for communication so we can provide the areas of support that we need, that we need to do to improve student outcomes. This whole thing of, because the policy says I don't have to, just, just to build capacity. just, just to build capacity and to say, hey, this is what schools would like to do, just like the 200-day plan. This should have been treated in the same aspect with the same courtesy to school board members. Because what it appears, and the narrative that, that some people like to put out is that we are not supporting the administration. Well, we, it goes both ways. We have to know what we need to provide support for. And if there is no evidence, if we're just popping out programs out of the sky because somebody knows somebody that knows somebody that knows somebody, oh, this worked here and there, we need the evidence to support what we are implementing in our schools. I, I'm just very concerned that that did not happen. I continue to be concerned. But I also know as a school board member, my concerns of voice goes unnoticed because it continues to happen. So I don't know what to do. Just keep repeating it, put it on a flash card? I, I don't know. But we need to have some form of a courtesy and communication that these things are happening so we can have the data in front of us to support the decision from the administration. Because that's what I think we want to do, is support the programs and activities and the vision. But if there is no backdrop, if there is no two minutes, three minutes, four minutes of, hey, let, you know, what about this? Maybe we had an idea, maybe a board member could have shared some, I don't know. But we don't know what we don't know. And so I just wanted to continue to share that. I would continue to share it. That, you know, it, it works both ways. Just, I think this should have been shared with the board, particularly with per Ms. White, the evidence and data that shows that this is working. Thank you. Or could work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to add one thing. Mr. Cameras, when you forward the contracts to the board tomorrow, can you also include the contract for Read 180? I'm showing that Halton, Mifflin, and the Harcourt is the same vendor. And I would like to make sure that we are not piggybacking on that contract or panned above the threshold of 250. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Young.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I do not intend to introduce for the purpose of vote this evening, but at our next meeting, and obviously I'll send a note to Madam Chair, you and Vice Chair, along with my colleagues, along with Superintendent, but it's my intent to introduce for a vote next meeting, a proposal that would change that $250,000 threshold pertinent to all contracts to instead $100,000. But Madam Chair, I'll disseminate that electronically in advance.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Young. Ms. Gibson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Mr. Young, I'm looking forward, I think that's an important amendment to our policy to look at. I might also welcome making sure that we see those lower contracts, even if we don't approve them, that we see them before they are, they are signed. I guess I would like to ask Mr. Cameras, just one point, there's
Thirty seconds left.
There's a lot of confusion in the community that, that every school is using this software for second and third graders. And so I just want to make sure that we eliminate any confusion if there is. So is this happening throughout the district in every single elementary school, or is it not?
No.
Okay. So, so all schools who have been told that they're using it, they do not, they do not need to be using it?
Time.
This is 100% optional.
Thank you.
Dr. Harris Muhammad.
I'm going to forward this email to every board member, but it was just shared with us, some of us, that the pilot was made mandatory for all schools. A certain school had to do it, and it was not mentioned on that list. I'm going to forward this to board members because this is what was shared, just shared with some board members. So this is coming from a full-time teacher. And if that, if I, again, this goes back to process, procedure, and policy, the three Ps. So if it was mandatory and not, you know, by choice, that's a different conversation not to be had tonight. That's okay. But I just want to be clear that we have teachers who are stating that it was mandatory. And again, I'm going to forward this. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I think at the minimum, it sounds to me that board members are expressing that they'd like to be notified when broad-based initiatives are both considered and implemented. I, I think that's a valid request. Just wanted to chime in and add that. Okay. We are now moving to 6.02, first read of Internet Services Contract.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I don't have anywhere on Board Docs to upload this, which is why I shared it with you over email, but we'll happily upload it for second read at our next school board meeting. But this is a contract for Internet Services. It's approximately $760,000, but 90% of that will ultimately be subsidized by the federal E-Rate Program. So it actually comes out to about $76,000 over the course of three years. If the E-Rate funding for any reason does not come through, we would not be obligated to continue with the contract. Again, this is just first read for this evening, and of course, happy to answer questions from now until our next meeting, when I would request your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. 6.03, receive legislative update.
Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, and Superintendent Cameras. Matthew Stanley, the Director of Advocacy and Outreach, here to provide a legislative update for you all on the heels of the adjournment of the 2023 Regular Session of the Virginia General Assembly. The highlight from the first slide, please, the highlight from the General Assembly is sadly that they did not adopt revisions to the biennial budget for the end of this year FY23 or any new spending for FY24. In place of their normal process of adopting revisions to the budget and providing some additional funding for state services, they did pass just a skinny budget, which was a very short number of priorities, just to kind of keep things running at the state level and meet some state obligations that they have. And I can share a little bit more about that in a bit. But during the General Assembly session this year, we were following five main priorities in addition to the budget as a whole, and of course, continuing to monitor and respond to other legislation that was introduced. In terms of the legislative priorities that we had this year, we did see a few items where there could hopefully be some success. In terms of reforming Virginia's education funding streams and formulas, we did not see any major action on that this year. That was not unexpected. It is the second year of a budget. Those would be some pretty massive changes that would have to be implemented. And we are waiting for a J-Lark study that will be coming out this summer that will go into further review of the state's standards of quality education funding streams, including the local composite index, a topic that I know you all are very familiar with. One small item that I do think is important, and I think will make our budget staff very happy, is that there is a work group that was directed to be formed based on some legislation that will look at just the, the finance systems that the Department of Education uses. The calculation templates that we receive from the state are pretty tough to parse out. And so it does look like there will be some modernization over how that information is prepared for school divisions. In terms of supporting all levels of English learners, legislation that was, was introduced this year by Senator Hoshmi, as well as some other legislators, unfortunately failed, or failed in the House of Delegates. We did see the Senate propose some additional English learner teacher funding in the Senate budget. It was actually a sizable amount of funding, and it would have brought the English learner teacher ratio down from about one to, from one to 50 down, from one to 50 down to about one to 41. So that would have been a significant increase in the number of English learner teachers provided to school divisions. So we'll talk a little bit more about the, the budget impasse in a bit. Investing in teachers and support staff, that's another item that is still pending a bit. Both of the chambers did seem to agree on teacher compensation and providing up to a 7% raise for the next fiscal year. But with their budgets having not passed, that money is currently limbo. The other thing that is in limbo because of the budget impasse is the elimination, full elimination of the support staff cap. That was the cap that was put in place during the Great Recession. We've been advocating for years for that to be fully lifted. Last year, they lifted about half of it, and this year, we were hoping for the other half to be lifted. So one more item that goes into that, hopefully will be resolved when the budget gets resolved this spring. In terms of school construction and modernization, there was no action on that this year. I, my, my read on that is that that is not completely surprising, given that, again, we are in the second year of a budget. I'll remind the board that thanks to the legislation that we worked on with Senator McClellan in 2020, the creation of the school, Virginia State Commission for School Construction and Modernization. Last year, the General Assembly appropriated $1.25 billion for the purpose of school construction. So that was a great start, but it does show that we will have to continue to keep up our advocacy year over year to have the state continue to support localities with school construction. And then in terms of the modify, modifying the classroom size reduction waiver, that was a very small budget amendment that we placed in consideration with the General Assembly. They did not pass that. And so that is not a huge impact to us, but it's something that we will certainly continue to go back to and see if that's something that we can modify in future years. Next slide, please. This next slide is, is a dense slide, and what I would draw your attention to specifically is all the places where it says not included. But the column where you won't see that in very many places is that Senate column. And that is because the Senate Finance and Appropriations Committee put forth a budget proposal this session that would actually be quite transformative in terms of supporting school divisions and supporting students across the state. Pretty much every single item on this list was something that they included in their budget proposal. Contrary to that, the governor and the House provided very limited proposals for public education, additional public education funding this year. They did not include any funding for the At-Risk Outdone Program that I know we've talked about previously. They did not eliminate the support staff cap. They kept money in for lab schools. Conversely, the Senate did these things, and they took money out for lab schools. So this is why we've been very public in our call to action, that we're hopeful for more support for the Senate budget. I'm happy to answer any further questions about any of the detailed lines in this slide. It's okay. Right now, I'm happy to go in and take those. Dr. Harris Muhammad? Of course. Sure. I just saw your hand raised. Okay. All right. I'll continue then. Happy to come back to this. Oh, yes, Ms. Rizzi.
So could you talk to us a little bit about what this whole lab school funding thing means?
Yes, ma'am. Last year, the General Assembly appropriated funding based on Governor Youngkin's request to, I think last year it was $100 million to fund lab school startups across the state. So these are college, the full, the full term is college partnership laboratory schools. And those are schools that a college or a higher education institution actually creates and partners, I'm sorry, doesn't partner with the local school division. But it uses those schools for teacher prep. And they, 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 they are supposed to be financially self-sufficient. They're not supposed to receive any ongoing appropriation from the state or from any school divisions. But the state is providing some seed money to get them started. So there are some updates. I'm happy to send you a presentation that provides a little bit more information on where these are happening across the state. But if I'm not mistaken, there's about a dozen of those that are now in the works. And so the governor has asked for more funding to continue to start more of those college partnership laboratory schools. There's a big disagreement, though, between the House and the Senate over whether or not to proceed in that. The Senate would really like to stop and, and let's see what happens with the current ones that are on their way before they continue to invest more money in, in creating additional lab schools. Welcome.
Ms. Page.
So, Mr. Stanley, thank you for this information. Clarification. So these lab schools is, this funding is the same part of money for public education, but for lab schools? So it's being taken away from funding for public education to create lab schools slash charter schools?
Madam Chair and Ms. Page, yes, all this money is direct aid to public education that comes from the state. So this is all state resources that are available for public education.
So follow up, Madam Chair. So are they planning? Or maybe it's something that we can do? Because again, this is the same part of money that's being taken away from public education. And are they planning to compensate public education for monies that they are taking away?
Madam Chair and Ms. Page. The, that, that is essentially the, the rift right now between the House and the Senate is that the, the House Republicans would like to see more lab schools started across the state. They believe that this is an educational choice. The, the Democrats in, in the Senate, they believe that there should be absolutely no public education funding, state public education funding, or local funding that is supporting these schools. So it's been a big, a very important priority as they're looking at language over how these are structured, that no further local money would go towards these lab schools.
Madam Chair.
One more, one more point of clarity. Do you have something else, Ms. Page?
Yeah, I just want to add or ask the question, is this something that local school divisions, what can we do? Because I want it to be clear. This is public education funding that's going to be funding, that's going to be taken away, taken away from public education to fund these lab schools.
Yeah, Madam Chair.
I want it to be very clear. So is it something that we can do as a board or, you know, local school divisions around the state?
Madam Chair and Ms. Page, this would be another great opportunity for advocacy with our state legislators. They're the ones who are appropriating this money. And we'll decide whether more of these lab schools get created or not based on that seed money that they're providing.
Mr. Stanley, you said that these lab schools were designed for teacher prep. Are students involved with this?
Oh, yes, of course. They're, they're, they're fully functioning K-12 schools. They could serve different, different grade levels if they wanted to. But yes, these are fully functional public schools.
Run by people who are learning to be teachers or?
They, they are, they are intended as teacher prep programs, but the, the details of that, I'd have to get some follow-up information for you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Young.
On the topic of, thinking, Madam Chair, on the topic of lab schools, I know at least two historically black colleges and universities, one I'm particularly familiar with, that have submitted proposals relevant to lab schools and understand that RPS were in receipt of a proposal from Virginia Union for students that specifically reside in either Gilpin Court or near proximity to Gilpin Court to participate in in a, in a school that would collaborate with Virginia Union University. I have a lot of faith and confidence in our friends at Virginia University and hope that this board would seriously consider Virginia Union University's proposal to partner with us relevant to laboratory school. It seems to me that at a minimum, this board ought to sit down, have a conversation with Virginia University relevant to their request for us to partner with them, relevant to students in Gilpin Court. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Ms. White? And then Ms. Burke.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is, and then I have to make, I want to make a statement afterwards, but maybe I'll make the statement first based on my colleagues suggesting that you bring the lab schools to, with Gilpin Court. Since I do represent the majority of the elementary students in Gilpin Court that goes to Carver, how about bringing the lab schools to Carver? We shouldn't have to go to, Virginia Union can come to Carver. We also have a partnership with them now. So why not the lab schools? And my question would be, looking at your PowerPoint, I would like to know, based on the math, the whole harmless from calculator error, can you explain the House versus the Senate? Because I see a full fix for 58.1 million.
Absolutely. Madam Chair, Ms. White, in terms of the calculation error that was discovered in January, if I recall, the Department of Education last year, when they prepared all of the calculation templates for school divisions based on the final approved budget for 23 and 24, they had an error in there. And the error essentially meant that there was, I think, it was over $100 million was the total amount of, of the error. And there have been a few different proposals over how the state could hold school divisions harmless from receiving any less funding. harmless from receiving any less funding for that error. The House proposed a very, very small fix that would have ensured that no school division received less overall aid than what they were due to receive under the former, under what they thought was the calculation. So that's why it's so little, because almost every school division for FY '24 was going to end up getting more money, just because we continue to see, you know, sales tax revenues change and ADM changes and other things change that typically most school divisions are always seeing a year-over-year increase. So that's why for the House fix, it was very, very minimal. What the Senate did was they did as much of the full fix as possible, so they actually went back and looked at what did school divisions think they were going to receive? What do we need to provide them to make them whole in that area? And then they also backfilled with all of these other policy changes. So that's why there's such a big difference in the House and the Senate budget.
So what you're saying is that it will be full fix with the 58.1 million?
So what I was going to actually clarify on my next slide is that when the General Assembly did end their session this year, they passed a skinny budget, and they did only maybe about five things in that. It was a four-page document. Normally, the budget document is hundreds of pages. And what they did was they, I think it was a little bit more, I have a number down here. When they passed that skinny budget, which did really no other education policy changes, they provided $16.8 million in funding. They looked at the numbers again themselves and determined that that would be the amount to ensure that no school division would receive less funding from enrollment and sales tax forecast changes than they were anticipating.
Thank you.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. Thank you for your presentation. Did the General Assembly discuss providing funding for schools who had open classrooms? So I saw a news report based on the traumatic experience in Newport News, and a delegate, I can't remember the name, but I could get that for you and email you and CC, Mr. Cameras. But there was a delegate that supports that area, that serves that community, requested additional, I don't know if it was construction funds, I'm not quite sure, but he requested additional funding, which was approved to address the open classroom space, if you know what I mean, like an Overbee Shepherd. So has that been discussion, the open discussion where schools that are impacted by that style? Because that's not the only school district. We have that. Other school divisions neighboring us have that. So could you elaborate on that a little bit, if you can? And then, do we have additional information from the governor's office on how to combat the teacher shortage? For example, reducing the requirements to obtain a collegiate license, extension of the provisional licenses that expired this year, which impacts so many of our provisionally licensed teachers in 2023? And if so, you know, have we received that information? And, Mr. Cameras, that's a little bit for you as well, but I would like to know about that as well. Thank you.
So, Madam Chair, Dr. Harris Mohammed, in terms of facility investments for any schools that may have an open concept floor plan, I do not have any of that information right in front of me or accessible right now. I'm happy to do a little research and follow up with you on where that legislation may have landed. It may have just been a budget amendment. But one, another place that I would note where the Senate budget really supports school divisions is that they provide an additional $50 million in school security grants. And I would be willing to bet, I would have to go back and verify that that type of, that issue is one that they were hoping that could be addressed by those school security grants. And in relation to your second question about teacher licensure, I don't have any of that information with me in my presentation tonight, but I'm happy to follow up. I haven't seen communication from the Department of Education yet about what changes may have been made, so we'll follow up and get you that information.
Follow up. Mr. Cameras, do we have an update on who is now the interim State Superintendent of Public Instruction?
I have not been informed of anything, so I do not know.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Yeo.
I believe it's Amy Gudere. I believe it's, Madam Chair, I believe it's Amy Gudere.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to go ahead and move on to, from that list of the House and Senate budget proposals, with just showing you what the total dollar impact of what those House and Senate budget proposals are. Chip, if you'll go to the next slide for me. This slide shows just in order of how they came out, what our direct aid estimates were for FY '23 and FY '24, based on the base budget that was approved last year. These numbers have been updated for, updated ADM. What the governor proposed, which was just a little bit more than what our base budget was, he had some very minor investments. And then the House budget proposal and the Senate budget proposal numbers. And that very last number is what I consider to be the most important number here, $192.4 million. That's about $19 million more than what the base budget was for RPS for FY '24. And if the Senate budget were to go into place, that's an additional $19 million in resources that we would have been able to work with for next school year. So this just really shows the importance of advocating for that Senate budget because of the dramatic changes that it could make in terms of how the state supports public education across the state. The governor and the House maybe touched on one or two things that they wanted to invest in, but the Senate really just went, and they looked at all of the different areas that our school systems are saying they need support with. And then finally, well, not finally, I have one more slide after this, but a few other legislative highlights for you. I encourage you to take a look at this quick list. The General Assembly, it was a short session, and a lot of legislation died this year. A lot of legislation that was proposed by Republicans died in the Senate, and a lot of legislation that was proposed by Democrats died in the House. But these were a few highlights. I think one thing that we are certain that is now in place is an expansion of the Virginia Literacy Act that I've shared with you before. Last year, the Virginia Literacy Act was put into place for just grades three, four, yeah, grades three, four, five. It's now been expanded, sorry, three and four, it's now being expanded through grades four through eight. The Senate and the House did have some differences in terms of the ratios. Once you get into the middle school grades, they wanted to provide half, half the number of reading specialists as the Senate did. But nonetheless, that expansion of the Virginia Literacy Act continues to be an exciting investment in supporting our students with their math and reading, or with their reading literacy. I'm going to forego discussing all the other bills on that list, but I'm happy to take any questions that you have about them. And then just in terms of next steps with the General Assembly this year, we do expect there to be a special session in regards to the budget at some point this spring. There are a lot of things that a lot of legislators want to see happen, and without them coming to agreement on that budget, a lot of things are just frozen for a whole nother year. And so we do expect there to be a special session where some of those things can be worked out. On April 12th, the General Assembly will meet again in Richmond for their reconvene session, and that's the session where the General Assembly considers all of the governor's amendments and any vetoes that he might have made. That is a chance for them to potentially pass a budget during that session when they're all back in town. But it's also just as likely that that session could happen later than the month. They actually have until June to do that, a special session for the budget. And then finally, just in regards to that, and in regards to these huge differences between what the Senate and the House propose, until that budget is done, every day is an advocacy opportunity. So I would continue to encourage you to reach out to your legislators. Superintendent Cameras has previously shared the list of all the comperees for the budget. Some of those folks are now retiring, but that doesn't mean that they have stopped working for us yet. They are still there, and they still have a job to do in terms of getting this budget passed, so I would encourage you to continue to reach out to them as much as possible in the coming months. So with that, I'm happy to take any further questions.
Ms. Burke?
I don't have a question. My questions were answered, but this was very well done, and it helps us to be able to advocate for what we need as well. So I thank you for your diligence in keeping us up to date on everything. Thank you so much.
You're welcome, Mrs. Burke.
Well done.
Thank you, Mr. Stanley.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, now we are at 6.04. Receive RPS 200-day pilot update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As a refresher, we have three schools that are still considering the 200-day pilot. Those are Cardinal, Fairfield, and Overbee Shepherd. Cardinal and Overbee are still conducting their family voting, so I do not have any recommendations with respect to them this evening, but I do have a recommendation with respect to Fairfield Court, with over 90% of their staff and families supporting the 200-day calendar. It is the administration's recommendation that the board approve the 200-day pilot for Fairfield Court Elementary School for this coming school year. I'm happy to take any questions.
Yes, I am honored to bring this motion to approve Fairfield Court Elementary School to move forward with the full implementation of the 200-day plan effective immediately.
Second. It has been moved by Dr. Harris Mohammed and seconded by Ms. Jones that Fairfield Court Elementary will move forward with the 200-day plan as submitted. Are you ready, are there any questions? Ms. White, and then Mr. Yeo.
Thank you, Ms. Burke. My question is, is this only for Fairfield? What about the other two, Mr. Cameras?
Thank you, Mrs. White. We are still waiting for the results of the family voting for the other two sites. Once we have those, which we'll certainly have in time for the next school board meeting, I will either bring them forward for approval or not based on the family voting.
A follow-up? I do have another question. Can you please clarify to me, is this money coming from the Ursa Fund for, because I know we had some money for extending learning? Couldn't this be used for this, or is this the same money for this?
Yes, it is coming from the ARP money, which is the last batch of the stimulus money for extending learning time, which is one of the recommended uses of those funds.
Thank you.
Mr. Yeo.
Madam Chair, to add, four additional weeks is a transformative opportunity, and I gladly support this. In fact, what's more, I can't think of many things we could do as a board to move the needle in a more substantive way. My hat is off to the superintendent administration for introducing this proposal, and I am most excited about it.
Thank you, Mr. Yeo. Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Clerk, I'm sorry, Madam Chair. So I just wanted to express, I plan on voting against the pilot, and the reason being that I have expressed on more than one occasion hesitation with, or really fear of the fiscal cliff, like where we're going to be next year, because we are continuing to move forward with using one-time funds for initiatives that will extend, hopefully, if successful, extend beyond. And so I want to reiterate that it is of critical importance that the board receive an overview of what that budget is going to look like. You know, how much, how much are we looking at in terms of, you know, looking in terms of a gap? Because we've used one-time funds to fund these recurring expenses. And so, and so, given that reality, I, you know, it gives me great hesitation to add to that potential deficit in the subsequent school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Any other questions or comments? Ms. White?
I have one more question also. Mr. Cameras, I do have a question with 20 more days given, and we are having summer school right afters, we'll be starting immediately. Do we have enough time to be pretty much on two schedules to get set up with our infrastructure, which I mean, our support, transportation, food? All of these things will play a big part of trying to coordinate the times. And I am not, as you probably know, I am not really, no one has to actually, I guess I would say for those 20 days, what is 20 days? This school is already accredited. They have reached the growth. 20 more days, what are you doing in the 180 days that you need 20 more days? I am really not clear about that myself. Running into summer school, going back to school early, and paying large bonuses, these are large bonuses for one time. And these teachers are on contract, so why are the bonuses so steep? I am not really for this 200 instruction day pilot program, because I'm not sure what 20 days will make a difference from 180 days. So can you clarify that for me, Mr. Cameras, please?
Well, every school that has applied for the pilot and is going through the process is developing an organic plan for how they want to use the extra time, and Principal Wright and her team are knee-deep in developing all of that. They have a very excellent sketch for what they want that extra time to look like, but obviously, they're going to continue to refine that over the next several months. It includes everything from basically giving kids a jump start to the year, to more field trips, more enrichment opportunities, more intervention opportunities. So a lot of wonderful things that they have planned. As for summer school, they won't have summer school, so they'll just begin their school year on July 24th, and that will be their first day of school.
Ms. White, follow-up?
Yes, I'm glad you said that, Mr. Cameras, you did partially answer my question. But my question is that every school doesn't get that opportunity, and we have a lot of other schools that are very much needed. My question would be, why isn't principals, individual principals of all schools, given the opportunity with the money that we're going to spend to build whatever they choose to, whether it's academic, whether it's tutoring, or whatever they choose to? It is time for us now, I believe, that to let the teachers teach. And we're putting a lot of programs in. We're spending a lot of one-time funds that we won't be able to put back in the next year. We are putting programs after programs. It's just a lot right now. So I won't be agreeing with this 200-day program.
Are there any other questions in session? Ms. Jones, then Dr. Harris Mohammed, then I'll make a comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we did confirm that this is a pilot, correct? And if the pilot is successful, do we have a plan on how we would like to see this implicated, implemented across the district? That's my first question.
I don't know that we would have the resources necessarily to do this in every school. However, there are a significant, there is significant state funding for innovative programs like this, and I certainly believe in a subset of schools, we would be able to do so. The very focus of this is to do it in a manner that is reflective of the will of the teachers and the families. And so there are many communities that would not want to proceed with this, but that is why we're starting where there is overwhelming support, and then we'll see how it goes. And I certainly believe that if we're able to demonstrate significant success, that would certainly generate, I think, a lot of funding opportunities from the state, locally and elsewhere.
Follow-up, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Thanks. And so I do support this, and I think it is good, and I think that a school being accredited doesn't necessarily mean that the students have everything that they need on, or are on the level. And so I do support this, and I think it is good. And I think that a school being accredited doesn't necessarily mean that the students have everything that they need or are on the level that they need to be on. So I do want to be mindful of that. But I would like to potentially see if we are calling this a pilot. It seems a little misconstrued if we basically are saying it's a pilot, but then we don't know what we're going to do with it afterwards. So maybe thinking about, one, how are we going to track the success of this program to even determine whether or not we would like to see something like this happening in other schools? And then, two, just being able to be thinking, I guess, in advance where we would like to see the success of this pilot possibly happening at other schools.
Thank you, Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. So one of the things that I have learned in this process is listening to how the schools, particularly me being invited to participate in the parental engagement session at Overby Shepherd Elementary School. I can't speak directly from or to Fairfield, but I have had the opportunity to hear and listen from the administration there. But I wanted to just share some insight on how it could look, what they're going to be doing. And so what is my understanding and what I support is, as soon as the spring data drops from specific data pools of assessment, they begin their planning for their, begin their planning for their plans of the 20-day plan. I'm sorry, too many plans. But the data plays a critical point, because they can't move, one, in isolation, and they can't move in a closet. So what I mean by that is, the data is going to speak to how they start. And I'm also convinced that the school in, Overby Shepherd and the sixth district and Fairfield are going to plan with the end result in mind. So even though Fairfield is accredited, when we really unpack that data, I mean, really break that data down, it's not 100% of students, if I'm not correct. If I'm not mistaken, Mr. Cameras, that passed, and that's a way. So there's still some room for improvement. What I would like to see, because MLK is a feeder middle school for Fairfield, is that conversations begin to happen between the administration at MLK and at Fairfield to see how we can produce a similar program at MLK, because the administration here did desire to have that, but not moving backwards. We're going to move forward, and we're going to support, I believe, the schools to ensure that, okay, we know MLK is right around the corner from Fairfield. Those fifth graders are coming over to MLK, probably 80 to 85%, they're going to be coming out of a 200-day plan, coming right back into a regular traditional school day. So we also want to think about that. And I think we have time to discuss that with both administration and school support teams at the table. Excuse me, I am excited about this plan, because our students have resiliency. And I believe when we put certain tier levels in front of them, they will perform at their level. And this is an opportunity for us to trust, let me say, I'm going to use the I message. This is an opportunity for me, I, to trust the process in ensuring that our students, the schools that have volunteered to do this, pilot it well and provide us the data that we need to make further decisions. So, and then also, lastly, I want to say, there are state funding, there is state funding to continue with innovative programs. So we need to make sure that, Madam Chair, that our, this conversation comes back around August or September, because that would be the timeframe in which we began looking at the application, and that data has to be collected and submitted to the State Department to get, to be in front of getting, and we have a direct resource. We have the Officer School Quality that can walk us through what that looks like or not, but we should ask. So we just want to bring this back around in a few months.
Okay, so I have a question. Go ahead, I'm sorry, Ms. Page, you go.
So just to piggyback off my colleague, we talked about Fairfield feeding into MLK. So as we think about expanding the program, the same thing applies to Oak Grove Elementary School, as well as Blackwell, that also feed into MLK. So I just want to note that as well.
Thank you. So I am wondering, you, this is a significant investment of funds. And, you know, we are talking about, you know, a school now. I understand what my colleague, Dr. Harris Mohammed, is stating about waiting until the spring data drops. But I really would like some concrete information about what these goals are for each school. I think, you know, going forward, it would be good for, you know, for transparency sake, that we see each school's, if this gets approved, each school's outcomes and goals. And so that we have them, right? And we can verify these existed before the data came out, you know, to like show, you know, how things worked out. So I really, really, really would, if, you know, if I support this, I would actually completely expect that those outcomes and goals be communicated to us as soon as they are drafted.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm excited about this. I'm so proud of Fairfield Elementary. I'm not surprised, because the climate is right there. The culture is in place. They are going to soar. The principal and her team already have put in place what they're going to do during those 20 days. Number one, it's an opportunity to teach our children that they are scholars and to speak of acceleration. We often talk about remediation, but I know the plan has already been put in place. Someone mentioned earlier, they have a retired teacher that came out of retirement to come back. When you walk into the front doors of their school, you know excellence and love is in place across the board. So I wholeheartedly support this. I'm not worried about it. I'm not worried about it happening again. And as one of my colleagues stated, it's about every child, 100% mastery. So until we get there, we have to keep working. We have to step outside of the box. I'm in favor of year-round schools totally, and I hope to see that in Richmond Public Schools. But I commend Fairfield for moving forward. I do hope that Overby Shepherd and Cardinal as well. And having gone to the parent meetings at Fairfield, first meeting, there weren't that many parents, but the parents and community persons that were there were eager. They were engaged. Then they did a walking tour, door to door. So that builds the trust and the relationship that the parents and the families have of that school's administration and teachers and team. You feel the love the moment you walk in there. They're going to do well, and I'm going to be stepping right with them. So I commend them. They are to be of support, not to cut, 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 but to lift up, because you have no other place to go but up. So thank you for the opportunity, Madam Chair. There is a motion on the table. Dr. Harris Mohammed made the motion to support Fairfield, and Mrs. Jones seconded.
Okay, so the motion's on the floor, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Dorr? Ms. White?
No.
Ms. Gibson?
No.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
We are now at 6.05. Receive update on retention task force.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Unfortunately, Mr. Robinson was not able to be here this evening, given another commitment. But you do have the presentation on the update of the work that they have been doing. Again, the goal is to come and bring some recommendations in the May timeframe. That is what they're working towards, and specifically, a spend plan for the 100K that the board approved in the budget for retention activities. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? Mrs. White?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Cameras, I'm looking at the members on this team. There is no representation for the Northside schools, especially middle schools. Why is that? I don't see any representation for Northside.
These were the individuals who self-selected. Anybody who would like to participate, just shoot an email to Mr. Robinson. His email is in the presentation, and we're happy to include additional individuals.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I mean, I, piggybacking on what my colleague, Ms. White, said, you know, there are schools in my district that have had substantial teacher retention concerns that have been brought to light. And so I would like to ask the administration to do some outreach in the schools that, you know, from the Culture and Climate Survey, where, you know, they had particularly low scores. Those are the schools that we need to ensure that these folks are at the table. And so Henderson Middle School, Holton Elementary School, I think that that's important to ensure that we're getting the full story here. Furthermore, I wanted to also inquire regarding the interview, I'm sorry, the survey of teachers from past teacher advisory councils and other leadership groups. I just feel that that perhaps is, I'm not sure why we would not be sending the survey out more broadly, because limiting it to folks that are, participate in these other leadership groups may not present, you know, the bigger picture. I'd like to find out more about the Teacher Town Hall and what that looks like. And then I'd also like to reiterate a request that I had made before, which is to codify the agreements made in collective bargaining. So, you know, we, you know, the agreement was that teachers would have, you know, unencumbered lunch, they'd have, or duty-free lunch, they'd have unencumbered planning periods. So I want to ensure that that, those promises, I know that those promises were made, you know, to teachers at Holton, for instance, that we codify that in policy. And then finally, that we commit to releasing this data at the school level every year. I think it's important to see, you know, where those schools are, that where we're seeing an exodus of staff members to be able to give this work the visibility that it needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Gibson?
I'm sorry, if it wasn't clear, I was just hoping Mr. Cameras might speak to next steps in terms of policy, or if there isn't any follow-up on those matters.
I will look into all of them and follow up with the board.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Cameras, I just want to say, please make a concerted effort to get someone from John B. Carey on this list. Then we are ready to move to, let's see, we're at seven. Receive for action Board travel and district activity requests.
They're posted to Board Docs.
They are, okay. Any motion? To accept any Board travel and district activity? Yes, Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Do we have to identify them? That was, that has been the practice. I'm just asking for clarity.
Yes, ma'am, I've started to post them on the consent agenda just to ensure that it's consent, and we don't have to actually go through the rigors of speaking on it.
Okay, we've just been in the business of identifying what they are. But I know they're on a consent agenda. I'm just stating that we've been in the business of identifying what the requests are. So I moved to accept the School Board travel and district activity requests.
Second. So it's been moved by Dr. Harris Mohammed to accept the travel and district activity requests. It's been seconded by Mrs. White. Roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Dorr? Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Epstein.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Ms. Burke? Ms. Page? Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Ms. Gibson, you have a?
Yes, I would like to make a request related to activity funds that the board receive an update in terms of our unspent, the funding in our budget that has not been spent, so that we can decide how to disperse that funding. I would love to give board members the opportunity to expand their efforts in terms of putting those dollars to good use throughout the community. And so if the board can receive an update in terms of how much that is, so we can then take action in terms of how that funding would be distributed. And then also, just an administrative note, it's my understanding that if the request is less than $200, it does not require a vote. And this was, my understanding was $100. So I'm not sure we even needed to vote on this this evening.
Thank you for that point clarification, Ms. Gibson. All right, we move on. Item 8, 8.01, receive reports from board members attending committee meetings and conferences. Yeah, it's on other information, but I think, Dr. Harris Mohammed, do you want to say anything?
Oh, just that I enjoy attending the VSB A Superintendent Evaluation Workshop conducted by retired Superintendent Dr. Michael Thornton. It was excellent, a lot, a wealth of information, clarity. And so I look forward to submitting my report this week. But I think as a board, we are based on that workshop, and he was really breaking things down. So if he's watching, I want to say thank you for that. And I'm looking, oh, it's only twice a year. He said that there was a question, there was going to be another one within the next few months, and he said this time and then in the fall. So just wanted to share that. But it was really good, really good information. Thank you.
Thank you. And I also did attend that conference. I found it very, very informational. I was really happy that I attended, and I did submit my notes and Dr. Thornton's slides. And you will see them on Board Docs soon. All right. Everything else is under other informational items. Relevant documents are posted to Board Docs. Any new business? Dr. Harris Mohammed, and then Mr. Young.
Yes, ma'am, I have a couple of things that I want to share. First of all, I want to share that one of our preschool principals, thank you, Mr. Cameras, for putting it in the RPS Direct, Dr. Victoria Hampton was named the WELVE Region One Ambassador Women Education Leaders of Virginia, Ambassador for Region One, which encompasses Heraco County, Chesterfield, Richmond Public Schools, Hanover, and some other school divisions. So congratulations and kudos to her. Also, kudos to the preschool principals who attended. It was a well-attended event at the WELVE Conference last week. And so I just want to thank the preschool principals who attended, and also some of our, I believe, RPS teachers attended as well. My other announcement, and I shared this before, but I just want to keep it on our radar, is that, I'm not sure why, but I would like for us to add- is that, I'm not sure why, but I would like for us to add back to the other informational sessions, a update for our MOU and Dreams for RPS. If there's not a recent update, we can state that. But I think it is prudent upon us to continue to add those two areas, to keep those two areas included in our other informational items. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My recommendation for the board actually relates to 8.02, another informational item. I do think that it would make a lot of sense for us as a board, in concert with the administration, to convene a conversation relevant to Georgewith and the cost specifically for the Georgewith Building. It's my contention that we need to abate said cost. The mayor's critique of cost, I think, is on point. So I would respectfully request that the board, in concert with good work of Ms. Fox, convene a conversation soon rather than later, relevant to value engineering that building and mitigating the exponential increase in cost. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Any announcements? Oh, okay, go ahead, Mrs. White, I did not see you. And then Ms. Page.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For new business, I am coming again for the third time. I would like Maggie Walker Governor's School a presentation on the selection process to be placed on the agenda. Also, I would like to know the status of the audits that are due for Maggie Walker Governor's School. Thank you.
Thank you. Announcements, Ms. Page.
Thank you. I would like to give a shout out to the Oak Grove Bellmead Elementary fourth graders for coming in second place for the exhibit category, the Regional Virginia's History Day Competition. So their theme was frontiers in history, people, places, ideas. And it came in second place. So they will be moving on to the state competition in April. And they competed against school divisions such as King and Queen, King William, Louisa, New Kent, Petersburg, Powhatan, and Prince George Counties, and Hopewell as well, and Gloucester, Goochland, Hanover, and Hariko. So I just want to give a big shout out to the fourth graders at Oak Grove Bellmead Elementary School and the teacher, Ms., hold on one second, Ms. Nurse. It's her class that made the presentation. So I just want to give them kudos, kudo, kudos, and I wish them much success in the state competition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Page. Mrs. White.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to also give out a shout out. Great things are happening in the 2nd District. For Carver, we have a brand-new computer lab. And thanks to UNOS, which is United Network for Organ Sharing, Historic Jackson Ward, Embrace Carver, KESR, Genworth Financial, and many other sponsors. Thank you, thank you. There will be a ribbon cutting soon, to be determined and announced. And I will invite all board members and Mr. Camus to attend. I also would like to give a shout out to Damon Dash and Raquel Horn, the author. They came to visit Carver last week and introduced her book, Dresko Goes to Space. My biggest shout out tonight, I would like to thank Mayor LaVar Stoney for his gratitude for giving Wim Fox the extra $15 million that we need to continue to build Fox Elementary. So I'd like to say thank you again, Mayor Stoney. And I actually did let you know that personally. So I want to let everyone know that I did say thank you for that because we need to continue building Fox Elementary.
Mrs. Page, and, well, who was, who was first? Okay, and then Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My last shout out goes to Coach Ty White, being named Coach of the Year. John Marshall justices. Woo-hoo! Congratulations and kudos again.
Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Thank you, Ms. Page stole that, but I'm glad you said it. That's okay, I was, was there. I wanted to share very quickly that Overby Shepherd is looking for volunteers to help with gardening, sprucing up the school. So if you can contact the principal or the assistant principal, if you have some time to volunteer at that school, we greatly, I greatly appreciate it, and they would as well. Thank you so very much. And thank you for all you do at my team at Overby Shepherd MLK and wherever my students go in the 6th District. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I believe it's time to convene and close.
Ms. Page.
Oh, Ms. Page, I'm sorry. You have more?
Pursuant to Section 2.2-3711, A1 of the Code of Virginia, 1950 as amended, I move that the school board of the City of Richmond convene in closed session to consider assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of the school board, or for discussion, consideration, interview of prospective candidates for employment, and the personnel actions for to be.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Page to go into close, seconded by Ms. Jones. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Ms. Dorr. Ms. White.
Yes.
Ms. Gibson.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Ms. Rizzi.
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Yes.
Ms. Burke.
Yes.
Ms. Page.